All right. I will call to order the special common council meeting taking place here Tuesday, July 18th at 7:07. Can I please get roll call?
Kevin Schmidt.
Here.
John Ortlieb.
Here.
Scott Meverden.
Here.
Midge Swedberg.
Here.
Wayne Schmidt.
Here.
Casey Boer.
Here.
Lee Dashlet.
Here.
Jake Merrick.
Here.
Can we confirm that this meeting is being held in compliance with the open meetings law?
It is.
All right, thank you. Let the meeting minutes reflect that it is. Item four, approval of or changes to the order of the agenda as it has been published.
So moved to adopt. Second.
Got a motion by Wayne and a second by Casey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. Item five, approval of the meeting minutes taking place on both June 5th and June 19th. Everybody have an opportunity to review those?
I'll second it.
Got a motion made by Jake and a second by Lee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries, thank you. Item number six, public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak under public comment for this? Anybody in the audience that'd like to speak under public comment? All right. And we will gladly move forward. Item number seven, consideration of bills, claims, and/or conference attendance. Item A, general bills and credit card payments.
I make a motion to approve the general bills and credit card payments.
Got a motion on the floor by Lee. We have a second. Seconded by John. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Meverden.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt. Dashlet.
Yes.
Merrick.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Ortlieb.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Item eight, committee reports. Everybody have an opportunity to go through and read those that have happened, all the committee reports? Any questions? Comments from the council regarding the reports? Hearing done. I would accept a motion to approve the receipt of the committee reports.
So moved.
Motion by Casey and a second by Lee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item number 10, old business, under old business. Item A, we've got redevelopment area number two update. Uh, Matt or Amber?
You want to take it? Um, just to bring everybody briefly up to speed, this is kind of a long road to hole here, but it really got set in motion today. We were told, go back three months, that we didn't, uh, we missed by one point to get WIDA funding for our redevelopment block, uh, right across from Denny's. We did find out Friday, Amber got a phone call, uh, from our developer, Commonwealth from Tyler, that a municipality, we believe, or somebody backed out of using funding. Um, and we got the phone caller, Commonwealth got the funding, they would like to fund the City of El Goma's project. Um, with that being said, myself, Amber, Commonwealth, Friday afternoon, uh, had a brief meeting, kind of brought us up to speed. There's a couple of things that they weren't able, obviously, because we didn't receive the, uh, WIDA funding. There was some federal funding that they didn't apply for because you don't apply for what you don't have the big funding. Um, so left some of 1.4 million dollars of shortfall to their project. So reached out with Gary Becker, um, and his daughter Katrina. They kind of ran the numbers along with Amber. We kind of walked through everything and felt the, that we could still make this project happen. There's some things that we weren't able to do that we wanted to do to build into the TIF. Um, as far as putting in the sidewalk and a couple other things that we're going to cover that. Commonwealth now has picked up the tab on the sidewalk work when the project is complete, they're going to do that. But, um, we, the RDA met, uh, today. We've given them a soft yes, that soft yes will continue. As we kind of set things in process, this will come back to the city council when we kind of have everything finalized. This is just a 300-foot view of where we're at, so everybody knows. Um, it'll, sure it'll be out on the street. Now we're doing, first we weren't doing the project, now we are doing the project. But I wanted to for sure bring the whole council up to speed, so everybody knows where we're at. Um, it still has to go through the joint review board. Uh, there's public hearings that have to be held. And as soon as we get to that point, it will come back to the council as well for adoption. With that being said, I know I gave you a three-minute lowdown. Um, does anybody have any questions?
So how sure are we going to get this one?
The WIDA funding is now guaranteed.
Okay.
It is.
Yes.
So all we gotta do is complete our end of it?
We have to complete our end of it.
And then we get it?
That is correct.
That's wonderful.
So, yes.
Next steps are, yeah, putting together developers agreement.
Agreement, joint review board, getting through the TIF process, so things like that.
Yeah, it is great news. Any other questions, comments regarding the update?
Will we still be putting a bus stop?
Uh, we will not, at this point, be putting up a bus stop. Their proposal that there will be one once the development is complete though. But we will not be putting up a bus stop, um, to reapply for funding for the 2024, spring of 2024. Excuse me.
Any other questions or comments regarding the update?
Well, just a comment, just as a reminder for everybody out there that there's no guarantees next year if we are to put it off. There's, you know, I don't know, if you want to explain that better, Matt?
Sure, and maybe I'll, I think that's, thank you, Midge, I think I'll touch base on that. So we were denied the funding in 2023. January 1, we would, the plan, the intent was to go back into funding. We felt pretty confident with Commonwealth, our developer, to go back after the same funding. The program fiscal year runs every two years, there wasn't a lot of change. Some very, very minimal expense and putting in a bus stop was going to give us possibly up to five more points. We felt like we were going to break the threshold to fall into the funding next year. The problem with that, and to what Midge I think is alluding to, is right now, this year, we fell one point down. We don't know, going into the January 1 of 2024, maybe there's one, maybe there's 10 more municipalities that apply and their projects end up scoring better than ours. There is, you're right, no guarantee that we would be funded in 2024. We felt pretty comfortable and thought we had a really good chance, but there's no guarantee. Today, Friday, we found out, we more or less have, the funding is guaranteed. It leaves a 1.4 million dollar shortfall, but there's some work around that and I feel pretty confident we're headed in the right direction with the guaranteed funding. To get the project off the ground a year, possibly two years ahead of schedule. Or ahead of our newest schedule, which came out this spring.
That's a good explanation, Matt. Any, any further questions regarding the update? All right, thank you for the update, Matt. We will move right along then into item 11, new business. Item A, which is going to be the temporary class B licenses, um, Aaron, you want to go through?
Yep, so, um, recommended from the PPP is to approve temporary class B licenses for the El Goma Fire and Rescue Association, the Knights of Columbus, the El Goma Hunting and Fishing Club. And, um, those were all recommended from the PPP for, um, the Shanny Days Weekend. After the PPP meeting had met, um, the Friends of Crescent Beach had also submitted an application for a temporary class B license, um, to host their Shanny Days honorary luncheon at the Robert Ray Gallery. That one did not go through the PPP committee, but if this body feels, um, comfortable accepting it, you could so choose to make that motion without it going to that first. There's not a state statute that says it has to go to the PPP first, it's just, um, how our code reads that it goes to that committee before it comes here. I'm sorry, our ordinance.
So, the other ones were three-day licenses, correct? And this is just the one day?
This is just that one day for their-
So the fire department applied for a three-day license?
Um-
Bless you.
I think I just have them grouped under that, I think it's just the one day.
The Knights of Columbus, the El Goma Hunting and Fishing Club would be your three-day license. The Friends of Crescent Beach would be a one day and the fire department would be a one day.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
I'll second it.
I've got a motion made by Wayne and a second, I think, John Beechley, um, got Wayne and John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries, thank you. Then we will move on into item B, which is, uh, admin. Chapter six dash animals dash ordinance review.
All right, so this, um, came out of the PPP committee. Um, for those of you that had your packets up, I did make, um, before I, when I put the agenda out, I didn't update it as the PPP had requested. Um, and what they had requested was to take out the word, um, Drake, which is a male duck, and replace it with Call Duck. So that change is Call Duck, no Call Duck, she'll be kept within the city limits. So this was recommended from the PPP to change this chapter of the ordinance. Scott, do you have anything else on it or want to discuss?
Uh, yeah, there's, I mean, this has been lengthy discussion at the committee level several times. Um, I think, Aaron, you did a great job going through and doing your homework on other surrounding committees, uh, communities. Um, a couple of highlights, I guess the only thing that I would fill the, the council in on is that this is simply, uh, one, it's cleaning up an ordinance that needed to be cleaned up anyways. Take ducks out of it 100%, it needed to be cleaned up, there was a lot of verbiage there that was misleading and, and we needed to do some work on it. And then secondly, um, as we did with, uh, resident chickens within residential boundaries a few years back, I believe it was, it's giving somebody the opportunity to apply for and retain a license that's based on an annual basis. Um, just because somebody has given these licenses does not mean that they, they cannot be taken away. There are, if, if you have a chance to go through and read, uh, through the, the updated ordinance review, um, there are several stringent rules and regulations that they have to adhere to. Um, and if and when it does become a problem or there are complaints within the city, whether it's, uh, be a neighbor or somebody driving past, walking past, um, then it becomes a, a, it's no longer an ordinance issue, it is a, um, compliance issue and-
Enforcement.
Enforcement issue at that, at that time. So it's no different than a dog barking loud all day, um, or, or any other nuisance, you know, call that the police department may get. Um, that's, I think, kind of sums it up too.
Good.
I'll answer questions as best as I can.
First of all, you're, you're changing an ordinance because of the ducks, okay? So somebody comes in and says, I want to have ducks, so now you're going to change an ordinance. What about the next one that comes in and says, I'm going to have geese? Or I'm going to have turkeys? Are we going to be back and forth to change an ordinance because somebody now wants to raise some geese? And geese are, they're like anything else. You can eat them, you can raise them, they're very noisy. I, I guess I'm just questioning why we're doing this.
That, I guess, comes from the, or that is, this all went to the city attorney. The city attorney, um, is not in favor of passing this ordinance. He said the ordinance is okay. What he is not in favor of is where does this end? If you do this, then the next person that wants a different animal, are we going to then rewrite that to include that? That's his concern.
Isn't that with everything though? I mean, they, we have UTVs now, where's that going to stop? You know, next thing you know, they're going to be, you know, X, Y, or Z. Uh, it's, and citizens have the, the right to, to come to, to, to meetings, to, to their elders and, and request changes. And it's incumbent on us or whomever is there at that particular time to determine whether or not it, it's something that can be actionable. And the, with, with ducks, uh, I mean, you see other, other municipalities, uh, give equal status to ducks and chickens and essentially the way that they live, the way that they exist, uh, the particulars of raising ducks and chickens are, are very similar. Um, you know, and it's, it's, so it's, you see other communities that have done it, that have not had issues with it. And it's not really that much different than chickens. And if somebody comes in, they want to raise X, Y, Z, then, then you, you address it in the same way that you would address any complaint or any consideration. At least in, it, from my perspective.
Yeah, you, you're, but you're changing an ordinance for maybe two people. All right, we're, we're going to read an ordinance. I, what about the rest of the community, what is their thought on this? Maybe they don't want people to raise ducks.
Uh, and to be very clear though, I think it's important to mention that it's not just strictly the addition of ducks. I mean, there was the striking up the animal control officer going through-
But you could have made those changes without, my point is, where does it end?
I get, I get what you're saying.
And I, I guess, if you're saying the attorney's basically asking the same question. Where, where does it end?
I mean, what about, there, there are probably more taxpayers in this city that are probably against it than there are for it. Now, I stressed myself once already and sent the letter. I fulfilled very diligently to keep my yard and my house looking nice and I should live next to somebody that has ducks and I can put up with that nuisance. I mean, maybe ask the, the neighborhood that are going to be dealing with it rather than sitting there and making a change for somebody that, to me, I think is absolutely ludicrous because you don't have to deal with it.
Putting my, well, I'm just going to put my neutral goggles on for a second here. It's no different than moving next to somebody that's got three screaming kids in the back and, or three dogs that are barking all day.
Well, dogs are supposed to be according to ordinance, they're not supposed to be barking, they get fined.
And it, and it's an enforcement issue at that time. And I don't want to get into a-
And who's going to enforce it?
Our police department needs to be enforcing it.
If you're allowing chickens, you need to allow ducks. Then you nend them chickens.
You should allow geese.
It's ATV, turkeys. ATV, UTVs.
This is between ducks and geese, and then how far is it to get to a, uh-
Well, then you don't know geese very well.
Hang, hang on, there, there, the ordinance has been updated. There is very stringent as regarding the number of them, the coops, the cleanliness. If and when there is an issue or a problem, or if you've got a neighbor, or if I've got a neighbor, or John, you've got a neighbor that's not adhering to these, you, you call, there, that's an enforcement issue. And the license can be stripped away, they got to get rid of the problem, whether it's chicken, ducks.
Well, how is, how is it ever easy? Than parking or this or that? There's, there's one officer generally on duty here, right? There's a, there's a plethora of things that happen. Um, we, we have limitations as a small community with, with limited resources on, on how we do things. Why, why are we looking at it from a restrictive perspective? You know, like, it seems to, to have a, a more inclusive, more considerate, um, view is that why not give the opportunity? Right? I mean, we, we, if enforcement is the issue, but enforcement's the issue on, on, on everything. It can't be everywhere all the time, but if you have, if you have a complaint, then you, you call it in.
And that's what I'm saying, I says is, you know, we're, we're adding this and we're adding this. This is a police department, not an ordinance officer that should, you know, that should be a separate entity that should be doing this. I mean, they got, all they got their hands full to do everything else, plus the parking regulation, which isn't being done either.
I don't disagree with you unbitly, but that's not what we're talking, I mean-
I understand that, but now you're going to throw the ducks at them and the chickens at them and, and it just-
Just give somebody the-
I say leave the ordinance the way it is, there is no animals, if you want it, move out in the country.
Well, there's chickens allowed, the ordinance says chicken.
And how many really have permits on them?
Less than five.
Well, I, I guess, the reason we're talking about it is because that's what we do. We discuss ordinances before we pass them. I'm just expressing my feelings on this thing, he's expressing his, you're expressing yours. So this is the first reading, or it's got to, you know, you'll talk about it at the second reading. And if you don't feel comfortable with it, then vote no. It's as simple as that. I mean, I'm just, I just don't know where it ends, I guess that's my concern.
And that is a legitimate concern. I, I totally understand. This is, this is allowing for the application of a license, which can or cannot be denied. But a license means a privilege. I mean, it is a privilege to have a license. It can be taken away just as soon as it can be given, so that, that is my opinion. We've kind of run around the room, get a gut feeling on it, Kevin? John?
If we're having chickens, we can let them have ducks, so I don't care. Otherwise, no chickens either. If you want, you can duck. Duck and a chicken, the same thing.
Anything you'd like to add here?
No, actually, I, just, is this where we stopped? I think Wayne's got the point, is, you know, where do we stop? We're making, we're making the point that the chickens and ducks are pretty much alike and that someone's got to come along and say, well, geese are. I mean, if you're doing ducks, you're going to do geese, but geese are a different animal.
They have different behaviors.
And that's- It's specifically spelled out here that it is specific to the genus.
I don't mind, I don't mind something-
Well, it's, it's kind of the same thing as during your meeting, you called out a certain kind of duck, I forget what it was.
Call duck?
Yeah, it's written in the ordinance, but I can, I, it, there's, I can spell it for you.
Casey can help us with that.
It, it's a, it's a female duck that makes noise.
Yeah, it is a female duck that makes noise, but it's a specific, it's a specific, um, genus, thank you. Uh, where most ducks, drakes or ducks, don't make noise, or at least don't make any more noise than you're, you're, you know, a rooster that's, you know, uh, going, going about its business. But there are, is a specific type of duck that the female of that species, uh, makes noise. It would be akin to what a, a rooster would do, or at least comparable in, in the nuisance potentially.
This is, yeah, again, to your point, it's, uh, first reading. Is there, is there any commentary or any detail, any issues, problems with the ordinance? Does it's, does anybody have anything that they want to strike at?
I don't agree with it.
Well, I don't like the police officers being out of control.
Right. I just, I, I agree.
I think we should have a whole separate county animal control person.
I just want it on record that I'm against it and I don't think it's right that the police department should be controlling it and changing the ordinances, when are we going to stop? That's correct, it's just that we just keep snowballing.
For animal control in the county, it's up to the town chair, the supervisors to do it, it's not-
So you want Matt to do it?
Maybe we look at hiring somebody.
We used to have an animal control officer, but we don't- We can change any of that, we can talk about building, we can talk about lawn grass, it's not just animals, right? Right. The problem that we can appoint somebody to be the animal control officer, we can appoint somebody, the problem with it is, is they have no authority to hand out any punishment. Right. If, if this body so chooses to say Matt Murphy, or Aaron Miller, or Amber, or Casey, or so on down the line, the problem when you defer to anybody but the police officer, we have no authority to hand down anything.
They also have to-
We have to get them involved.
Yeah.
At that point.
They do your dogs running out large and that stuff. Or barking dogs, but why should a police officer run around, chase a dog and try to put him somewhere, store him at the PD and worry about feeding them and, and animal control, that's their job, we hired them for, we had that. And then that time we gave the police chief extra money to do it, but now we're kind of back to square one, where we really don't have anybody.
I don't know, does he have one officer assigned to that? Is there somebody that takes care of the kennel?
Whoever's on duty.
They, it's, and that's why we changed it, it did say, uh, the animal control officer was the police chief. It really wasn't the police chief, it was the officer that's on duty. Um, you know, if the officer at 1 o'clock in the morning has an issue with the dog at large, he doesn't call the police chief in because he's the animal control officer. He does what, or she does what they can to mitigate the situation, put it in the kennel or whatever needs to be done. So that's why it's changed to police officer, not police chief. Because it's really the on-duty officer that's dealing with the animal complaint, whether it's a dog, a cat, or whatever the animal is.
Well, Scott's comment was, first of all, they wanted to clean up the ordinance. So let's just take the ducks out of it altogether, for example. You were cleaning up some of the verbiage.
Yep.
In the ordinance.
Yes.
And I don't have a problem with cleaning up the verbiage, to make it easier. I'm just not in favor of every time somebody comes in, I'm going to change an ordinance because I'm going to, and now add ducks. And you, you're entitled to yours and I'm entitled to mine.
Yeah, I just, I think then, yeah.
And it may or may not even make it to this body, or it, it might get squashed at the, the PPP, I mean, if it's-
Well, the PPP's introducing it.
I'm saying if additional animals, if somebody comes in and they want to do geese, or, I mean-
Because we, we're looking at turkeys.
It was the, 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 the Protections of Persons and Property, uh, committee met and it was there, um, at that committee level. They found that this was acceptable and they wanted to push it up to council.
Okay. Ju- just for clarity, if this body so chose, chose to strike this down, I know this is just the first reading, um, there has to be a second reading, it would then revert back to the PPP and for the ordinance change, minus the ducks or minus whatever, and then come back that way, if that makes sense to everybody. If we, the way it's written with the changes and the ducks added to it, it would have to go back to square one. We wouldn't just eliminate duck. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yes. Okay.
Everybody's somewhat said their piece, or thoughts on the, on the ordinance? Any further discussion? Is there any motion or action that needs to be, or wants to be taken?
I mean, motion to go forward, we still have the second reading, right?
Yes, you can make a motion to move it forward to the second reading.
Okay, yeah, I would make a motion to, to move it forward to the second reading.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Motion by Casey and a second by Kevin. All right, we're going to do a roll call vote on that one, Aaron, please.
Dashlet.
No.
Ortlieb.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Merrick.
Restain.
Your what?
Restain. Or abstain, I guess.
Wayne Schmidt.
No.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
The yeses have it.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Sorry, the yeses have it, one, two, three, four, five, to two no's and one abstain.
Thank you for clarifying, Aaron. All right, moving on then, item C, the El Goma Police Department Temporary Police Officer Agreement, the MOU, that was discussed.
Finance and personnel.
During our finance and personnel meeting.
I'll make a motion to adopt that.
Second. We've got a motion by Wayne and a second by Casey. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Merrick.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Ortlieb.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to item D, Resolution 1167-2023, which is the Summit Beach bids and awarding of contract. That was discussed during the finance and personnel.
All right, so we have Resolution 1167-2023, a resolution accepting bids and awarding a contract for the 2023 utility system improvements within redevelopment area number one.
Uh, moved. Second it.
I've got a motion by Jake and a second by Lee. Can I also get a roll call vote on that one?
Swedberg.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Merrick.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Ortlieb.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Aaron. And item E, Resolution 1168-2023, declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing. With the clarification on 1168.
Amber?
Yeah.
Amber, do you want to?
So this is just saying, they, this project that we're going to do in redevelopment area number three, or 10-3, is going to be funded with the tax increment. We have a bond anticipation note sitting at the Bank of Luxembourg for the work that's already been done. This project will be right around $600,000. Um, we need to make sure that we have this in place so that when we go to the bond market, we can include this in that bond. If we don't pass this resolution saying we're going to reimburse ourselves, then we can't, we have to wait for those tax increments.
So what you're going to do is you're going to add this to a, 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 a bond anticipation note at the Bank of Luxembourg?
Possibly.
Possibly.
If we do that, we will bring back another resolution approving borrowing to increase it, because you approved that borrowing as a settlement.
Okay.
This is allowing us to add it to the bond, the goal of the bond market.
Ah, okay, so you, all right, so this, this is not going to add to the bond- Ah, okay, so you, all right, so this, this is not going to add to the bond anticipation note, but potentially it might.
Correct.
Okay.
So that bond anticipation note at the Bank of Luxembourg, I believe, has until fall of next year before we have to do something.
Oh, you've got plenty of time to decide what to do with it then, okay.
We can, we can go alter bond market at any time, but it's to our benefit to wait a little bit longer to-
Sure. What did Belong say about rates? What, what's happening here?
Surprisingly, the municipal bond rates are holding fairly steady. He said about, you should plan for about 4.5%.
Okay.
Which is not that much higher than it has been over the last few years.
All right, we're about 3.5 or 3.75?
I think our last one, we were about 3.4, 3.5.
Okay.
Considering what the consumer loans are at with the banks, it's going very low.
Okay.
And he said there's no signs of it going up anytime soon.
Thank you for the explanation, Amber. Is there anything else? Any, any further questions, comments?
Moved.
Got a motion on the floor for 1168-2023 by Jake. And we have a second by John. Can I get another roll call vote, please?
Meverden.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Maring.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Aaron, appreciate it. Moving on, item number 12, we've got the administrators report.
I don't have anything at this time.
Nothing?
Nothing. Thank you, though.
All right. Item 13, which is the mayor's appointments and comments.
Are you going to deny anybody? You've got a chance.
I don't think there's-
Now's your chance here.
Do you have any appointments?
Come on, President.
Now, now's your chance.
I appreciate everybody's healthy debate and participation tonight. Amen. Moving on, agenda items number 14, I had agenda items for next meeting. If anybody's got anything, please mail them to either Aaron or Matt or the mayor. And our next meeting, item 15, is scheduled for Monday, August 7th, here at City Hall at 6 o'clock. Moving on to 16, most should do adjourn.
So move.
We've got a motion.
Second.
Motion by Wayne and a second by Casey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.